Hello, good evening and welcome to the November 12th meeting of the Planning Commission. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we start with a roll call, please?
Commissioner John Ebner.
Present.
Commissioner Ramiro Maldonado is absent and excused. Commissioner Margaret Williams.
Vice Chair Ellen Mallory.
Present.
Chair Mike Etheridge.
Present. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the meeting minutes approval for the October 22nd meeting, which I was absent for. So, do any commissioners have any comments or feedback on the minutes that were provided?
I do not.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Hi? Okay, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the public comment if any members of the audience wish to speak about a matter that is not on our agenda. Do we have any speaker slips? Okay. Nobody wants to speak? Okay. So we'll close that item and we'll go straight to item number two of the public hearing on 180 East Third Avenue.
Good evening Chair Etheridge and members of the Plan Commission. My name is Rendell Bustos, Associate Planner and Staff Planner for Agenda Item Two this evening, which is a public hearing for 180 East Third Avenue, PA 2019-002. So, to begin with the project site, 180 East Third Avenue is located on the southwest corner of East Third Avenue and South Ellsworth Avenue with a total site area of 7,038 square feet. The site is zoned CBD for Central Business District and has a general plan land use designation of Downtown Retail Core. The site is subject to the Downtown Area Plan and is specifically located within both the Downtown Retail Core and the Downtown Historic District. The existing use of the site is a gymnastics studio with an office. Previous to the gymnastics studio, the retail level was leased to Aaron Brothers. Adjacent to the site include the central parking garage, a one-story restaurant building, Walgreens, and a five-story mixed-use building with ground floor restaurant uses. The proposed project includes the full demolition of the existing structure to construct a new three-story mixed-use building with one basement level and a private rooftop terrace. Retail uses are proposed on the ground floor as well as offices on the basement through third floors. The project would also remove and replace the existing five street trees along the project frontage. And lastly, no onsite parking is proposed as the applicant has requested to pay parking lufies for all required parking spaces. Prior to this public hearing, the applicant held a formal neighborhood meeting in October of 2018, and shortly thereafter, the Plan Commission viewed the project as a study session in November of 2018 in which the Commission provided input on their request for parking lufies as well as the building design. Public comments generally included support for the project as well as concern for the project's impacts to traffic and parking in the downtown. I should note that a few comment letters were submitted to staff after the release of the packets of the Commission, and hard copies of these comments have been provided to the Commission. And lastly, a historic resources evaluation was performed in April of 2019, which concludes that the existing project does not qualify, excuse me, the existing structure does not qualify as a historic resource. As presented, the project meets all applicable zoning code standards pertaining to floor area, height, and lot coverage, and in addition, the project meets all requirements related to setbacks and bike parking. And separate from these previous zoning code standards, I'll elaborate on two topics, the first being parking. As stated earlier, the project does not propose onsite parking and requests to pay CPID and lufies for all required parking. The second topic is on the building design mainly on the project's consistency with the downtown historic district. So on the first topic, the project is located within the downtown's Parking Assessment District, which is called the Central Parking and Improvement District abbreviated CPID. And within the CPID, the project is within the limited parking zone abbreviated LPZ emphasized in red. And the LPZ as a notice encompasses most of the downtown retail core, and the intent of the LPZ is to place a greater restriction on parking to foster a pedestrian retail environment. So in considering the parking proposal for the project, the first question really is how many parking spaces does this project require? The CPID has unique employee and visitor parking ratios based on use, in this case, general offices and retail. So based on the applicable parking ratios, the number of required parking spaces is 58 spaces, which accounts for both uses for both employee and the visitor parking requirement. The CPID however does not necessarily require that all of these parking spaces be provided onsite, rather the applicant, an applicant can pay for a portion of or all of these spaces via CPID and lufies at the discretion of staff or Commission review. So while 58 parking spaces are required, the second question really is how many parking spaces can the site actually provide? So because the project is within the LPZ, the zoning code actually limits the number of onsite parking spaces to just the visitor requirement. And the intent of this for reduced parking is so that the LPZ, as outlined in the Downtown Area Plan, is to limit curb cuts and onsite parking, which both can disrupt the pedestrian environment. So that's the maximum number of parking spaces that the zoning code can permit is six spaces, again, given that the max parking ratio for a site in the LPZ is based on the visitor parking requirement only. To assess the project's parking proposal, the city's traffic consultant Hexagon prepared a traffic study which estimates that the project will not result in any net new peak hour trips. And in addition, a parking analysis was prepared which estimates that the adjacent central parking garage is expected to have sufficient capacity for parking generated by the project. Hexagon also prepared a Transportation Demand Management Plan, TDM, which outlines required measures such as caltering go passes and bike user amenities, and the TDM plan estimates that the project will result in a 25% trip reduction. So again, the second discussion topic relates to design review. So first, there's some background, the project is subject to the downtown retail core and the downtown historic district design guidelines, given its location. At the study session, the Commission commented on the building's design and ways to enhance its compatibility with historic district. Lastly, the project was reviewed by Larry Cannon of Cannon Design Group for consistency with the design guidelines and the historic district. So this is the set of the street elevations that the Commission reviewed last year at the study session. The left is the frontage along South Ellsworth Avenue and the right is along East Third Avenue. And the bottom set of elevations is the current design, which includes a reduction to the height, additional window and brick detailing, and different color and material selection. And then these are the elevations along the interior lot line as well as along the central parking garage. So one focused component of the historic district that Larry Cannon highlighted is the common pattern of second floor windows in the historic district that were often paired or narrowed, more narrow than the first floor windows. And so early in the review process, Larry Cannon and staff recommended the applicant revise the design to incorporate this pattern, which caused some back and forth discussion. I should note that the project plans in Attachment Six don't show the recommended change, however, staff has incorporated Condition of Approval Number 38 requiring that the narrow windows for the second floor be included in the forthcoming building permit. So because this is a new building, the Commission may also want to consider more contemporary designs through nearby recently approved or recently constructed downtown projects. So these are some of those, some of those projects, either in the downtown core or adjacent to the downtown. So at this time, staff is seeking feedback on the Plan Commission's position on the second floor window design. So this is the set of elevations currently shown in the project plans, which include second floor windows at the same width of the first floor windows. And the lower set is the recommended elevations with narrowed windows recommended by staff and Larry Cannon. So as noted in the staff report, Condition of Approval 38 requires that the upcoming building permit plans include the narrow windows, much in the nature of the lower set. So if the Commission has a preference for the wider windows, then staff would ask that that condition be removed. The applicant is present this evening and will provide more detail on his preferred design. Staff's recommended environmental termination is for a categorical exemption for infill development projects, given the project's size and urban setting. And in addition, staff conducted more focused detailed technical studies for traffic as previously noted, as well as for archaeology and greenhouse gas emissions. So to conclude, this evening, staff is recommending that the Plan Commission motion to find the project exempt from CEQA as an infill development project based on the findings for approval in Attachment One, and approve the site plan and architectural review and site development plan application based on the findings for approval in Attachment One and conditions of approval in Attachment Two. So this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is present this evening and will be providing a presentation. A representative from the city's traffic consultant, Hexagon, is also present for questions. And lastly, staff is available for any questions the Commission may have. Thank you.
Okay. Does any Commissioner want to ask questions of staff before the applicant makes his presentation or would we like to wait until after? Okay. Can we have the applicant's presentation, please?
All right, good evening Commissioners and staff. We appreciate the opportunity to present our project at 180 East Third. Tonight, last time we were with you was about a year ago when we had our study session. So over the past 12 months, we've worked with Ron and Rendell and the rest of the staff to hear their design comments, respond to Larry Cannon's design comments, and that's what we're here to talk through tonight. So thank you for the opportunity. A little bit about Lame Partners, we're a local developer, we're based in Menlo Park. We're established in 2006. We currently have about 5 million square feet of projects in our pipeline throughout the Bay Area. We are active participants in the communities in which we invest, and this happens to be our first project in San Mateo. Rendell covered a lot of this in his staff report and his presentations, we'll get through some of these relatively quickly. Here's an aerial of the site, can you hear me okay? It's very echoey.
It does seem a little echoey.
Maybe because I'm 6'9". Okay. I'll just stand back. Here's an aerial of the site. Rendell had this in his presentation, this is the existing building, Aaron Brothers is no longer there, it's now a youth gym operation, and there's a small office tenant on the backside of the building on the second floor. A quick look at the history of the project, again, as Rendell touched on, we were here about a year ago, we had our study session. Over the past 12 months, we've worked with the team to respond to the various comments. Some of the changes we've made along the way are the reduction in the roof screen, we reduced that by two feet. We improved the atrium design, as we'll show you, there's a cool atrium feature on Ellsworth that looks down into the basement, so we've worked on that quite a bit. We agreed to replace five street trees along, I think there's two on Third and three on Ellsworth. So those are some of the changes that we've made throughout the process. The project contemplates a mixed-use project, retail is 3,400 square feet, office component is about 14,000 square feet. We've designed the retail so that it can flex for one or two tenants, as you'll see, there's an entrance on Third Avenue and a potential second entrance on Ellsworth in case there's two tenants interested in the space. Some of the additional features, the bottom section of the slide, I'd like to point out, we have a balcony on the third floor that overlooks Third Avenue. We've contemplated a roof deck, about 2,700 square feet, and then there's a basement level to the building, which is about 5,800 square feet. We're viewing that basement space as 100% office, and for our internal calculations, that is factored in, in the lufie and the commercial linkage fee. It's not included in FAR, but it's included in the fees we have to pay to the city. This is a summary of the streetscape improvements we're going to make, five new street trees, we're going to add some benches along Ellsworth and Third, planner boxes, wider sidewalks, and great visibility into the retail space on both Ellsworth and Third. This slide shows just a general site plan of how the site relates to the parking garage. You have San Mateo Prime, Page North, Third Avenue, Page Right, and then Ellsworth, Page South. One thing I'd like to point out just while we're looking at this is all the brick that you see on the sidewalk. At one point, we contemplated keeping the existing brick and replacing where necessary. Since then, we've agreed to replace the entire sidewalk. So it'll be uniform brick and pavers on both Third and Ellsworth. Flip through these, this is the basement plan, the atrium above is about 400 square feet on Ellsworth. We've got bike parking in the basement, that current bike room has room for 18 bikes, we have four short-term spots on Ellsworth, the city requirement is six stalls, we're providing 22, up to 22. This is a shot of the potential ground floor layout. You've got the office lobby on the left towards the parking garage on Ellsworth, the main retail entrance is on Third Avenue, and then we've dashed in a potential second entrance on Ellsworth to the left of the atrium. So I'll let you study this for a second. The dash line going through the retail is a potential division of the space. This is the second floor office plan, this is about 5,200 square feet. Here's the third floor of the office level, Page Right, there's the balcony overlooking Third, that's approximately 300 square feet. This shows the potential for the roof deck, all this furniture is just a potential layout. You'll see there, we've carved out space for the PV panels, which we will build as part of the corn shell. We will not wait for the tenant improvement, we will build that as part of the corn shell. So this rendering is from the opposite corner, looking back to the building, you'll see the prominent white columns that break up the facade of the building. You can see the detailed brick feature above the first floor windows in between the second floor windows. There's a metal reveal there below the second floor windows. This is a closer view of some of the facade details that we've added, you can see the details at the cornice. Lighting along the columns. We've got perforated metal panel awnings. And these views show the wider second floor windows, not the narrowed second floor windows, just to point that out. And then there's the office entrance to the left as you head towards the central parking garage. The rendering on the left is looking down Ellsworth towards the office entrance. Planting, perforated awnings, the brick detail. You can see above the first floor window line, we've got some sailor course brick detail above the windows. And all the brick and pavers will be new. The rendering on the right is just looking directly at the corner, the retail entrance is to the right of that column, and there was a comment in our study session that recommended recessing that retail entrance further, we've done that since the study session. This is a rendering of the office entrance. This is an important rendering to talk through. This shows what the atrium would look like if you're at the Joseph A. Bank Building across the street. The idea here is to really engage the pedestrian and have visibility through to the retail use behind the atrium glass. In prior designs, we had a window display concept, we've removed that, and we've essentially made it a glass box so that as you're walking by or as you're looking at the building, you'll be able to see all the way through to the back wall of the retail space. The color shapes that you see is just a potential public art display that hangs from the first floor into the open well space. This shows, these next two slides show it a little bit better. So this is a view looking down into the open office below. We're contemplating some art that hangs down into the light well with views back through to the retail space. You'll notice there's frosted glass on the backside of the atrium, that's three and a half feet tall, and the purpose of that is for privacy for the customers inside the retail space. We wanted to summarize all the sustainability components of the project, as Rendell touched on, we have a TDM plan that reduces our trips by 25%. We'll be installing the PV panels as part of the core shell. We have the short and long-term bike parking that exceeds the city's requirements, we have a shower for employees in the basement level, we will have no natural gas, we're not installing a natural gas meter, so it'll be all-electric, and we will build the project to meet lead silver equivalency. So while I'm here, I'd like to touch on the narrow versus wider windows discussion. The consultant's report and Rendell's presentation showed examples of historic buildings or downtown buildings that have wide windows on the first floor and then narrow windows on the second floor. We've spent time looking around the downtown, and there's just as many buildings that have wide windows on the ground floor and wide windows on the second floor. The Kingfish Building, spectacular building, has the same with windows on both levels. So the point of showing you this is we think our design does fit in with, in this historic context of the area. Another building that's not on here is the worst hall building, which is 310 Baldwin, which is also, you know, just a fantastic, fantastic building. So another reason why we like the wider windows, just in general, more natural light is better than less. If you look at some of the examples that were in staff's report with the narrow second windows, if you asked a tenant today, where would they rather be, they'd rather be in a building with more natural light than less. It's also important to take into account that on the south and west elevations, there's no opportunity for glass because it's zero lot line. So as we're adjacent to San Mateo Prime, we cannot have any glass on that side, and we don't have any glass on the backside of the building. So our only opportunity for natural light is on Third and Ellsworth. And, you know, finally, personally in our design team, we think this just looks better. The examples that the consultant had were all two-story buildings. This is a three-story building, we think the windows that match on the first and second floor establish a strong base to the building as you move up vertically. If you start switching the window dimensions as you go up, to us, it seems like it's sort of a choppy design. This seems uniform and establishes a base at the first two levels. So does someone all have more natural light is better for the long-term prominence of this corner? A tenant will want to be here if there's more natural light. Here's a view of what the experience would be like as a tenant with the wider windows looking out. And that, that's it, thank you.
Would the Commission like to ask questions of the staff and applicant before the public comment period, or would you like to wait until after? Okay. Can we, do we have any speakers for this item?
Three speakers.
Okay.
Matt Sweeney followed by David Karp.
If anybody else would like to speak also, you can fill out the slip after.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Matt Sweeney, I left San Mateo 10 years ago and recently moved back earlier this year, and... And one of the things that really attracts me to this community is having such a vibrant downtown. So I'm not here really to speak to the design elements or intricacies of the project, but just to voice support as a whole. I think this is the type of project that will bring the type of retailers and restaurants to downtown, that will keep it relevant and keep it vibrant and lively.
Thank you.
David Karp, followed by John Kraft.
I'm David Karp, and I live up the street at the Gardens condo. In 2012, I resigned, I retired from my Los Angeles architectural firm of Barton Myers and Associates. And they're a fine office, but it was time to go, I was 80 years old. And we decided to come to San Mateo to be near our son and his family. And I'd just note that back in the '60s, I worked as an architect with Louis I. Kahn, who was one of the most acclaimed architects of the 20th century. So it's, I suppose, obvious that I have an interest in the development of San Mateo. And I'm going to probably present a different view of what I see, which is I see a similarity in construction that's gone up since I've been here in 2012. And to me, it's disappointing. I see projects that are hulking, pretentious, and overscaled. And I don't think, I know we need development, and I suppose it's not so nice to see open, open, undeveloped land, but I don't see a project going up that really enhances the city of San Mateo. And here are two more projects on Third Avenue that I think have the same lack of thoughtful principle. And incidentally, in my opinion, the nicest project in San Mateo is the library on Third Avenue. So I can only say that I wish that there would be some projects thoughtfully designed by developers for this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Karp.
John Kraft, followed by Ben Stern.
Thank you. My name's John Kraft. I've been working in the city of San Mateo since 2007, so coming to work every day for the past 12 years, and I've really seen the downtown transform over that time. I think it's changing for the better. A lot of the projects that have come in recently have really brought in some nice retail uses, some new good employers growing their employee bases in the city. And I really feel this project could do the same and continue that trajectory for San Mateo. The location just seems like such an obvious one for redevelopment, that the current property, you know, is just obsolete in many ways, I feel. And that's a very, very prominent location, close to the Caltrain station. I could very easily envision employees taking the train and walking to work. People that live nearby, residents that live in San Mateo, biking and walking in to their office every day. So it just seems like a very good project that I think should be supported in San Mateo. And one thing, I do think it is interesting on the discussion about the windows, just because I have some recent experience. Our company recently relocated our offices to the Bay Meadows Development on Delaware. You guys are obviously very well aware of that project. And one other thing that drew our company to that project and those buildings is the size of the windows, the natural light. So it's something that I think you guys should consider. It's something employees really do take into account as they're looking for space for their companies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Stern.
Good evening. Thanks for hearing me speak this evening and your consideration for the project. I've been a patron of San Mateo Retail, specifically downtown, for the last 40 years, having grown up in the Highlands and then Borel and Aragon. So this is home for me. And I've seen it change tremendously, for the better, over that time period. I'm in the business of office leasing. I'm very active in the downtown markets throughout all of Silicon Valley, and very pleased with the progress that San Mateo's made, especially, I would call it, this cycle over the last, you know, eight, nine years. We have some of these larger buildings that are bringing in quality professional service tenants, technology tenants, all of these tenants that are required to provide an employee base that will service the retail for many years to come, especially when the market turns and it softens a little bit, and there's not as many people in the downtown. It's really important to have a strong base of large tenants, much like many of the other downtown markets have. And so with that, I'm in tremendous support of this project. I think it is absolutely the right thing for the downtown market to take some of these older buildings, replace them with quality buildings that will bring in really high-profile companies that will go across all of the service lines, not just technology. And with that, I think, from my expertise, when working with a lot of these tenants, that's really all I do, is helping these different types of tenants in leasing in the downtown markets, the one thing that's absolutely critical to them is the natural light. And so it seems like we're having a lot of discussion on the windows tonight. I could tell you from my own personal experience in representing these types of tenants that would go into this building, that it's essential. What we call the gun slit windows or narrow windows, tenants don't want it. And I think that the more natural light you can provide, and I give credit to Lane for their design and the thoughtfulness around the atrium and the windows, that's exactly what the tenants need and what they want. And I think as you diminish the window line, you may also diminish some of the quality of the tenants that might be considering the project. And I think those really strong tenants are valuable for the city for many years to come. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any additional speakers that want to come forward?
Okay, we'll close public comment. Okay. Why don't we start with questions for staff or applicant? And can we start with Commissioner Williams down there?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, thank you for the presentations. A number of my questions were answered during the course of the presentation. The project is a great, I really like the project. I think it's a great use of that corner. That corner is really sort of underserved by the building that is there. So I look forward to seeing something a little more substantial, and this looks like a good project for that corner. A couple of my questions. The first question, I guess, is for the applicant. As I was reviewing the plans, I noticed, I actually can't recall what it's called, but the rooftop kind of green area, and what came to mind is, you know, and why is this building not a LEED building? Why, you know, and then you mentioned that it'll be LEED Silver, you know, built to a level of LEED Silver. So why not just get it LEED certified? And so I guess that's my question. Would you consider getting it LEED certified?
Yes, we would. The process and cost to do that is still unknown at this point, given where we are in the construction drawings. But the answer is yes, we would consider that.
Okay. Yeah, because it is difficult to say that you can achieve LEED Silver until you commit to it, and then make the decisions as you go through design and construction documents. And, you know, and those decisions would then lead you to LEED Silver, so.
Yeah, we have to start the process pretty soon here. So we have a LEED consultant on the team, Bright Works, and they put together a LEED scorecard. Based on their scorecard, we can get there.
Okay.
So I have to figure out what the cost is. I know there's going to be a parking and luffie increase in January, that was not in the underwriting. So every sort of dollar now matters as we go into underwriting and looking what the project will cost.
Yeah, it may, I mean, it will certainly add cost to the project, probably, to go through the certification project process, but perhaps it adds value to your, to future tenants.
That's a good, that's a fair point, I can't argue with that.
Let's see. Are we sort of covering questions?
Is this questions for the applicant or the staff? And then we'll circle back around with the comments.
You answered my other question about the display area in the atrium. I was going to ask how you access that, but I think that's clear to me now, how that's working. So I don't really have any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mallory.
So I had a question about what you're going to be doing in the restrooms as far as paper towels versus hand dryers.
You got me. What would you like to see?
Hand dryers. Well, we can get to that. Are the metal awnings a done deal on the outer design?
The short answer is yes.
Okay. And those are all my questions right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, another?
Through the chair. You stated that the couple of elevations, you cannot have glass because the building is on the lot line, correct?
Correct.
So is that code? Or if the building's on a lot line, do you have to have fire-rated glazing?
It's code.
Okay. On sheet A 302, which depicts both sides of the building that you mentioned, you can't get any natural light. Are you going to have, or have you thought of any architectural features that might take these kind of blank monolithic walls and make them a little bit more attractive?
So the first, the top elevation is facing the parking garage, so you can't really see it.
Okay.
And then the other elevation is covered 50% by the.
What is that, 80%?
About 50% by San Mateo Prime.
Okay. All right. We have seen some imaginative work done where you do have these blank buildings with some artwork and stuff.
Some birdies or something like that, I'm sure, yeah.
On the Ellsworth side, even the front, the elevation in a full daylight, it looks very dark, at least on this drawing, and a couple others that I think I saw. And I noticed that you just have lights down low on the corners and a couple of the columns. Is there any idea of getting some more, because I park kind of there quite a bit?
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
And that whole side now already seems kind of dark. Is there any way to get some lights on, up higher in this building to give it a little bit more of a warmth, warm feeling? The elevation, that elevation one, I mean, that is really dark. That's on the cover sheet, actually. I don't know, it might be something you would think about.
I think what, here's an idea, is on the Ellsworth side, the bottom rendering is on screen?
Yeah.
You think that's dark right now? Okay. I think we could build it, and if lighting's an issue, we can work with the city and the tenant to increase it.
Okay. If you actually look at the, there's the other elevation, the one above, it's really dark. So, and that's in full sunlight. Just a thought, I don't know.
Okay.
Might make it a little bit more inviting.
Okay, thank you.
I think last time, I had asked if there was any thought of putting some residential on top of this, and that just isn't something that works for you guys?
So we looked at it briefly. So the roof deck area is about 5,500 square feet. The mechanical penthouse is about 3,500 square feet. So you're left with 2,000 square feet. And that's before you add in circulation, recycled trash chutes, and another setback. You have to set it back another 15 feet from the building line. So you're left with room to maybe have one or two units up there?
You have a couple little tiny units.
Yeah, a couple tiny units. And then you've got to go down the lobby and deal with access, security, and there's no parking on site either. How, you won't be able to lease those, if you don't think. And no one wants to be up there by themselves, I don't think.
Makes sense. I think that's it for the app. Oh, one other question. So I kind of understand the architectural reason and difference of opinions with the second store light, or windows. Is there an economic side, other than it's more attractive? Or when you do your build-outs, do you want your windows wider for your mullions to hit with your dry? What else plays into it?
There's probably a construction factor into that. We've not looked at that. It would not be meaningful, whatever it is.
Great, beautiful, thank you.
Thank you. Couple questions for the applicant. First of all, thanks for addressing the residential question, because that was, that was one of the comments that came out of the study session and in the neighborhood meeting. So I appreciate you mentioning that you looked into it, and I couldn't understand with that footprint.
You're welcome.
Your response. The, what is the contemplated number of employees that would be occupying, based on that square footage?
It would be over 120.
120 with 58, and that, and the way that converts the parking was the 58.
Correct.
So is, with 120 employees, is the 22 bike spaces, does that make sense? Especially with the TDM measures that are in place, is that the right number? I have the same question on the study session. It just seems like the bike spaces seem really low, but I know that there's like a ratio and everything that goes in. But what's the consideration that went into the number of bike spaces?
So I'll let Rendell chime in here. Also, from our standpoint, how many can you really fit to have it make sense? And so you're not taking up a ton of usable space. We felt like 18 in that room was a good number. We can certainly look at adding more if a tenant wants more. I don't know if that answers your question from the TDM standpoint. I think Rendell can maybe better chime in.
Yeah, just based on the zoning code requirement, it's based on not the number of employees, it's based on the number of square feet for the retail and office component. And so the required long-term spaces is just two spaces, and then for short-term, just three. But the applicant is far exceeding the long-term.
Is the, okay, another question for the applicant. Is the roof deck for, meant for the office occupants? Or if there's like a restaurant or something on the bottom floor, on the ground floor, would it be for use of, so I'm trying to understand?
Yeah, good question. It would just be for the office tenants. And our design doesn't contemplate a restaurant, like a full-service restaurant in the retail. There's over 140 in the downtown, so we're hoping there's a different type of retailer that moves in there.
I noticed that in the drawings, that it wasn't.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. Question for staff. I understand that parking and luffie right now is 26,300 per space?
I believe, around there, yeah, in the current fee schedule, yes.
And that is the applicant mention that's raising on January 1st?
I'm going to defer to Sue Ellen, I can send with Public Works.
Hi, good evening. The current parking and luffie is $26,311 per space.
Right.
Staff, we, staff was at city council last Monday, so just over a week ago, presenting analysis and recommendations for the parking and luffie. City council directed staff to return with an increased parking in luffie for new development would be $50,000 per space. And then a fraction of that for change of use projects. But that requires a public hearing. At this time, we're scheduled to return to city council for that public hearing with a resolution to be adopted to put that fee into effect on January 6th.
Okay. The question on the central parking garage. So there was mention in the traffic study that there was adequate space in that garage. How does that, the usage and the mix of monthly parking passes in the central parking garage compared to the Second Street and El Camino garage, which is the subject of the other compared to the Second Street and El Camino garage, which is the subject of the other matter on the agenda? Because I know the Second Street and El Camino has like a backlog of monthly passes. Is that similar with the central parking garage or what is, how do those two lots compare?
Sure. From a data standpoint, the central parking garage has a lower average occupancy than Second and El Camino. Midday, only by about 7%, but the Second and El Camino garage is close to 90% occupied during midday, whereas Central is just over 80%, which means that you can still find a space whereas Second and El Camino is perceived as being full at that capacity. The permit spaces at both garages, the total number of spaces available is roughly equal. The permit waitlist at Second and El Camino is roughly 400 right now. At Central right now is six. So it's a much shorter waitlist.
Oh, six. Not 600, six.
Six.
Okay.
Six people.
Half a dozen.
That is our most expensive monthly permit at $100.
Okay.
But yes, six people.
So there's some supply and demand, dynamic pricing.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that. Question for staff. Wanted, so understanding, and I, you know, I drove around the area and looked, but I just want to confirm because we've heard from the applicant, we've heard from some public comment, there is some diversity in downtown with buildings as far as that concept of the second story windows. I want to confirm it is staff's opinion to recommend that the conditions of approval number 38, that is the preferred staff position right now?
Yes, correct. Staff's position is consistent with Larry Cannon's recommendation for the narrow windows, which that condition asks for those narrow windows in the forthcoming.
Okay.
In the middle.
And the last question I had for staff, because I saw this in the vast materials, but it wasn't, wasn't mentioned per se in the presentation was, can you clarify again the conditions of approval item number 71? What is the intent behind that? Because I understand it has something to do with the view of the ground floor. And there's a specific wording 71. What is the intent of that specific wording?
Initially, this pertains to the atrium design.
Right.
Initially, staff and Larry Cannon was concerned that there would be a lack of semblance of view through the atrium. Because initially, the applicant had proposed a window display which blocks a view through the interior, but they've since redesigned that and the condition is written such a way to require that that window be kept of visual clutter for the life of the project. Basically guaranteeing that some view into the retail space on the ground floor would be provided and maintained.
Was it specific to the atrium or is the whole ground floor of the Third and Ellsworth?
More specific to the ground floor view through the atrium.
Okay. Let me read that one more time to make sure I'm understanding it. So specifically, "The glazing enclosing the atrium shall be kept free of opaque film, visual clutter, or other sources of visual obstruction." So this is the, so this is inside the building, the glazing that's, okay.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. I had no more questions for staff. Commissioner Mallory has another question.
And I don't know if this is staff or the applicant. So, is there a calculation of the square feet of glass difference between the same size second story window and the two narrower second story windows?
Staff hasn't done that calculation. I'll defer to the applicant.
We have, thank you for your question. We have not done that calculation. But I'll tell you, the width of the narrow windows that we're contemplating is about five feet versus 12 feet.
Five feet for each window?
Yeah, each window, each narrow window would be five feet and the wider windows, which is our preference, would be 12 feet.
Okay, so it's 10 feet, 10 feet versus 12 feet, I guess is the...
So it's two five feet, right?
Way to look at it, right?
Two five-foot windows.
Two five-foot windows.
Versus one 12-foot.
With the, you know, the brick breakup in between that. Yeah, the solid surface.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
So, can you explain to me the parking requirements one more time? I heard six and I see 58. So what was the six?
Six was the bike.
No, so 58 is, so every use in the downtown has a minimum parking ratio and minimum required number of parking spaces. And so that number is 58. So when the project is in the limited parking zone, LPZ, the intent of the LPZ is to limit onsite parking, limit, not encourage. And so for non-res uses, it limits the number of onsite parking spaces to the visitor parking requirement. And so if you do the math, it is just six. That's the number that, that's the most that staff could approve onsite for this project.
So, so that's it. It's 58, six is for visitors, 52 for employees. The max you can actually have is six for the visitors.
But you have to pay for 58?
Well, if they were to provide, if they were to provide six onsite, they're not providing six onsite.
Oh, okay.
So they're gonna have to pay for all 58. The last thing I would say is the six spaces, the six visitor spaces that you're limited to be able to provide onsite, that's not as of right. You have to get a special use permit in order to get those, just to get those six.
Okay.
So, this has been an expression of policy. I can't remember if it's in the original 1980 downtown specific plan, but certainly since the 1994 version, the policy of discouraging new curb cuts, generally vehicles, parking in the downtown retail core has been a concept that's been carried forward. Obviously, if you've ever been in downtown San Francisco, obviously different environment. But as you're walking down the street and you see these curb cuts, you never know whether there's going to be a vehicle coming out. So in order to make it a more pedestrian-dominated, pedestrian-friendly environment as opposed to one that is oriented towards a car, the restriction on parking and on curb cuts has been around for decades.
Just to clarify, you would need a special use permit to put the six spaces in?
Yep.
Kind of a catch 22.
Well, I mean, you could approve it. But, you know, you'd still have to get an in-lu fee or find another, you're not gonna find it, but if you found another lot in the downtown that had an excess 52 spaces and had a special use permit for offsite parking. And I think the philosophy is, is that by collecting the in-lu fees in the limited parking zone, you're able to create parking outside of the limited parking zone. Therefore, having cars, parking and those types of facilities outside of the primary pedestrian areas in downtown.
Thank you, Ron. Through the chair, one more question. So this project is exempt from the CEQA requirement as an info project. And I'm curious, and I don't, I don't know if I've seen these in recent projects that have come to a maybe, I've missed them, but there's a full greenhouse gas emissions assessment. Is this something above and beyond or is it a requirement?
The greenhouse gas assessment?
Yeah.
So there are a number of findings out to be made for the categorical exemption. That's why we have a traffic study even though it's exempt. We have to make findings that there are no adverse, there's no impact due to traffic, air quality and things of those nature. So that's why you see these technical studies. The technical studies are very similar to those that you see in mitigated negative declarations, but it doesn't require it to be combined into a mitigated negative declaration. There's no 20-day review period. I would say that there are contrasting theories behind the need for greenhouse gas emissions. Now, we have done these in the past, but as the commission knows, we have a qualified greenhouse gas reduction strategy. That is the city's climate action plan and that's recognized by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District as well as in the CEQA guidelines as being appropriate mitigation for any greenhouse gas impacts. But we've done that nevertheless in this case to be a little bit more conservative on the CEQA side.
Okay. Beautiful. That will, that's the end of my questions for staff. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Can we have the, the motions up and let's go to final comments before we vote? And we'll start again with Commissioner Williams.
Sure. I have a number, a few comments here. So I'm gonna start with the issue of the windows and the elevations. I'm gonna start by saying that I think there's an interesting kind of layer of the different elements that are, that's going on. You've got the, the layering of the kind of more formal white piece and the brick and then the backdrop of the larger elements. So I think, I think that's working, but there, there is kind of a lot going on. So I'm a little bit torn about this question of the windows. I agree with Larry Cannon, the design consultant, that the smaller windows really do hearken to the sort of historical elements of adjacent nearby buildings. But I'm not sure this is exactly the right place for them. So... So, I'm a little bit torn, like I said. When I look at what, I don't know, could you pull up the elevation? So, yeah, that's fine. So when we, when I look at the top left view, for instance, the windows on the second floor with, that are the full width, I think that the division of all the little mullions along the top is a way to kind of, you know, strike some kind of compromise of smaller windows or something. But that's the part that bothers me the most about the wider windows. As I said, I kind of like the smaller windows in the lower elevations, but I'm, I'd be happy to go with the upper ones, except I don't like all the little mullions along the top. It seems like it's just one too many things added in. So I don't know if that's muddying the waters here, but that's, those are my thoughts about the windows. I did notice that in the elevations that two different glazing types are called out and frames. So I think it's a, I guess it's a low tinted glass with bronze frames. I'm not sure if that means it's a clear or, I guess, low tint maybe, maybe means not tinted versus the upper ones that have a blue tinted glass in clear anodized frames. So I am wondering kind of what the distinction is there. If the blue and clear anodized frames are limited to the third floor only, then, you know, maybe it serves a better purpose for the, for the, from the interior. Anyway, so there's kind of a lot going on there with different glazing and frame types that I think I would, I think I'm coming around to seeing that they, the second floor and the first floor matching would be acceptable to me. So again, I'm kind of looking at all these different details that are going on. I really like the brick and the, because as I looked at all the documents that were part of the package, there are a lot of brick buildings right across the street and all around in the area. And the detail of the, kind of intricate detail, I think adds, adds a lot to the brick. So while I'm on the subject of the elevations and the windows, I think this question of the atrium is, is interesting and I think it only works if it's done well. And I think it's really important that it stay, you know, it stay clear. I'm not really sure why the film, you know, to three foot or three foot six, three foot? Three foot six. And that's, that even seems kind of high. I'm not sure what the purpose of that is. I think I would rather see it all clear because we're, the whole intent is, I think the intent of this requirement is that this is a retail space and to preserve the pedestrian experience, you want to be able to see into the retail and see the activity. So I think that's important, that it be clear as much as possible. It's fine with me. Can they answer? So those are my comments about that.
Thank you for your question. So in terms of the three foot six of frosted glass inside, so the thought there is, how do I put this? So privacy for customers inside the retail space? So the office workers down below don't have a view?
Ah, I get it.
Yes, thank you, okay.
Yes, good idea now.
Makes sense.
Okay. Let's see. The retail doors on the Ellsworth elevation, I guess, are like to be determined if they're necessary. I guess if you had one anchor tenant, you wouldn't need them. Okay. I guess that's about it. Let me just make sure. My notes are all over the place. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Mallory.
So I'll address the building. I like the design of the building, but I do have a problem with the design in the historic area. So if that building was going to be somewhere else, I'd say, yeah, that's a really great building. But I think that based on what I've seen in the surrounding buildings, it doesn't necessarily blend in regardless of the fact that it's within the context of a historical area. I think some of the other buildings that you showed as examples of how the buildings are the same width on the second floors, they were both arched. So there was a distinction between the first floor buildings and the second floor buildings, second floor windows, and they were arched. So, in my thinking, a compromise to make it a little more historically significant are the narrower windows. And for me personally, I would be willing to make that compromise if the second story windows were made to be the narrow ones. 10 feet of glass above the 12 feet of glass with one piece in the middle. I wonder if the people working in there are really gonna notice that much a difference in natural light. I think a five-foot window is a really good sized window. So for me, that would be a very good compromise on that. In thinking about the LEED Silver designation and working toward that, I would hope then that all of the insides of your building would try very hard to be sustainable, recyclable, things like that throughout, including bathrooms and, and things like that where we're not using paper towels. And then, I did like John's idea of something decorative on the prime side. Doesn't have to be big, doesn't have to be dramatic, but just something to break up that wall and make it maybe a little more interesting to those coming toward the building down third. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Through the chair. So I came to the meeting completely convinced that I wanted all large windows. And the more I look at it, the windows that are smaller on the second level on Third Street, to me, look appropriate, but I wouldn't have them on Ellsworth. So there's another thing for you. I am a very large supporter of historical areas in downtown. I think they're very important. They're great to have, great to, to work with in the confines of new buildings. In the immediate area to this, to this proposal, I'm not really inspired by a lot of the adjacent architecture. I like this building. I think it's attractive. I like the, the different materials that you've, you've brought into play. The columns are nice. There are a few buildings that are used in the same style that have recently been built. So I think we'll probably get to the point where we're gonna be looking for other architectural styles for downtown as we move forward. I don't think that at this point I would be supportive of conditions of approval number 38 requiring the windows. I do very much respect Larry Cannon's comments and staff and I don't want to contradict either one of them. But in this case, I don't see it's appropriate. I do very much appreciate large windows, a lot of natural sunlight, especially since you're not having offices normally on the perimeters. It lets the light into the whole floor space, which is very important. It lets the light into the whole floor space, which is very important. So I, I don't think that I would support that conditions of approval. And I, I would like some type of commitment on, on that one blank wall. I do know that some of your competition down the street has put in quite a bit of effort into making sure their large walls that don't have windows have some architectural features that are pleasing to the, you know, to the pedestrians. I would, I would hope that something would be applied there. Thank you.
So with regard to, you know, this building estimated, so I do remember the study session a year ago. I do think the design changes that have been made were responsive and all additive to the look of the building. And I also appreciate the concept that they're going to repave that entire walkway out front. I think that's going to be a nice, you know, soft addition to the downtown. I'm also, as I was at the study session, very supportive of the in-lu parking instead of building parking for the space. So like Commissioner Ebnerter, I've been going back and forth on the window question. So my initial thought, I'll just walk you through the journey. My initial thought was I liked, you know, because again, walking through, going through the downtown and looking at the, you know, the area, it did feel like the narrow, you know, that differentiation on the second floor was more prevalent and maybe more of a fit. And this is a, you know, kind of a classic architecture exterior, except with the windows. And so now when you look, now is the more I look at it, when I look at the third floor windows and the open area, it is sort of a modern concept, and you still have the classic arches and the brick. So I'm thinking out loud here. I mean, I think that there, you know, the, the applicant brought attention to some other buildings that don't have the differentiated second floor windows. As Commissioner, I think Commissioner Mallory mentioned, I don't, you know, I think like Kingfish and one other ones, those were sort of ornate designed windows. So yes, they were wide, but they were very, you know, differentiated in a different way. When I look at this, when I look at these two layouts, I do see, I do, I do, I, I see where the staff and Larry Cannon is recommending the second floor because it is consistent with a lot of the other buildings. But for this particular project, as it's designed and look out, I feel like the, having the second floor open windows fits in more with the overall building design and layout. So I've been kind of going back and forth. So on the conditions of approval, so I think the question here for us is, do we, do we agree with keeping conditions of approval 38 in or not? I think Commissioner Ebnerter has mentioned that he is not supportive of number 38.
Correct.
I do not feel strongly that 38 needs to be in the conditions, but I would like to hear from Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Mallory on it.
Well, as I said, I was sort of on the fence as well about which, which way to go. I would, I, I do like the, the, the lower window, the recommendation by Larry Cannon, which is, which is that condition of approval. I would be willing to not, to, to not have that as a condition of approval if it didn't have all the little mullions across the top, which looks like a residential component that doesn't work.
Can I address that?
Sure.
We added the muttons is what I believe they're called on the second level windows in response to Larry to try and add some historic features to that level of the building. We are happy to remove them.
What is that? That's this?
It's, yes, yeah. It's the little mullion system on, on top, the metal, like the steel narrow slots.
What if there were less of them? What if they were, like, so if you look at the, the left narrow, yeah.
Can we zoom in?
So here we have a vertical window and another vertical window here. What if that wasn't divided in two and that wasn't divided in two? And then obviously, these would be equal to that and to that. So there'd be less of them, but they would still be divided up along the top.
I get it. That makes sense, and we could do that.
Just so we're clear for the record, so is the proposal to have what Commissioner Williams referred to as a mullion, have one mullion going down the middle of the window?
No. Well, let's see. In the 12-foot wide window assembly, the narrow left and right pieces would not have a, not be broken up by, in two at the top. And then at the large window in the middle, it would be broken into three components at the top instead of six.
So are you talking about the third floor?
No, I'm talking about the second floor windows.
You can keep it.
Okay, so this piece right there and right there would, would not be divided into two. It would just have this horizontal piece, that horizontal piece. And then this row of little windows here, which is six of them, instead of being divided into six little windows, it would be three. So they wouldn't be square, they would be, they would be more rectangular. But they would be the same size. I could draw it.
Are you clear? I'm, I just, I'm, I'm not following, so I want to make sure that we're clear on what is being done.
So maybe can we pull up, maybe a better, perhaps a better slide to look at would be page, if we could pull up the, the drawings, page A002, there, right. Yeah, zoom in there.
So right there where the cursor was, yeah, right there where the hand is, that would not be there. You would have the horizontal element, horizontal dividing, dividing that left-hand window into a top window and then the bottom one, and the same thing over on the far right. Okay, so then, then in the middle section, instead of six little windows going across there, you would have three. Again, I'm only talking about the top portion.
And the vertical elements would remain the same?
The, the main vertical element is the same, that large mullion, and then the horizontal mullion, or I'm not sure which is mullion and which is mutton, but the hor, horizontal piece that goes all the way across the 12 feet from the left to the right, that would remain the same. It's just, right now, you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. You have 10 little windows, and there would be five total.
Do you have a thought on that?
No, I like it. I think it's a good idea.
No, he's, I'm fine. Yeah. Thank you, sorry. Just to try and bring a conclusion to this issue, I think we, we get it. We understand what you're looking for. We're in favor of it. Can we work with staff to come up with a design that addresses this? That makes sense to me. Yeah, I don't know that we need to have a prescriptive. So I think, well, I'd like to have Commissioner Mallory weigh in as well on this question, but.
I would prefer the narrow windows.
You like the narrow windows design. Okay, well.
It depends on the motion.
Yeah, well, before, let's, so on the motion, let's, let's be clear. So I think the recommendation from Commissioner Williams is to, and Commissioner Ebnerter is to not, is to strike conditions of approval number 38 with the understanding that the applicant is going to work with the staff to change the, the windows to, instead of having 10 separate, having five.
Or it sounds like the recommendation is to replace condition 38 with a new condition that says, requires the applicant to work with staff to reduce the number of small vertical elements as described at the hearing.
Okay.
Oh, yes, you're right.
Do you agree with that?
Yes.
Do you agree with that? Okay, I do as well. So I think that, so let's take a vote on the staff recommendation. So we'll start. So I'm going to make a motion that we adopt staff recommendation, A, find the project exempt from CEQA as a Class 32 section, infield development projects categorical exemption based on the findings for approval in attachment one, and B, approve the site plan and architectural review for a new mixed-use building and site development plan and application for tree removal based on the findings for approval in attachment one, and conditions of approval in attachment two, except what we're submitting here is that conditions of approval number 38, the language will be changed as we discussed. So on, for that, can, did I just make the motion? I think I did. Can I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Okay, so all in favor of that recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And not in favor?
No.
No, okay. So that is what we will adopt, three to one. Hopefully that was clear enough.
Yes, it is, thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And that decision is final with the Planning Commission pending an appeal in accordance with the San Mateo Municipal Code.
Okay. Before we go to the last, third item on the agenda, we're going to take a five-minute break, please.
Yeah, it'll take us a little, little while to switch out.
We will unpause the meeting, and we will go to item number three on the agenda, which is the study session for Two West Third Avenue.
Good evening to the Planning Commission. My name is Philip Brennan. I'm the project planner for this pre-application for an office development project located at Two West Third Avenue, planning application PA 19-012. Before I begin the presentation, I want to notify the Commission that an email was sent to the Commissioners with an Arborist report that was submitted with the initial application. During the pre-agenda meeting last week, Commissioner Mallory inquired about some heritage, three heritage trees that were proposed for removal. The, the Arborist report on page three provides the Arborist justification for removal of those trees. In summary, it's the removal, the request for removal is due to poor health of the trees, malalignment or growth of certain heritage trees, and again, the poor overall condition of the aforementioned trees. The project brought before the Commission today is for a three-story office building. The project is, or the building is just The project is, or the building is just under twenty thousand square feet of gross floor area. The building is being proposed at a maximum height of just under forty-five feet. The permitted height in the zoning district is fifty-five feet. The applicant is requesting to pay fees in lieu of the required fifty-two required parking spaces, which will be discussed later in the presentation. The proposal does include additional site improvements, including widened sidewalks, additional street trees, and new curb and gutter installations. The existing site does feature seven heritage trees comprised of Coast Live Oak and Valley Oak, of which three, again, three of the trees are proposed for removal. A factual data sheet analyzing the project's compliance with the applicable zoning code requirements is included as attachment five. The project site itself is just under eleven thousand five hundred square feet. It's currently vacant. It formerly served, most recently, as the seventy-sixth gas station, which was demolished in twenty-fourteen. The zoning for this site is executive office with the R-five residential overlay designation. The general plan land use designation is executive office and high density. The project's located in the central parking improvement district. It's located along the western edge of the downtown plan area and in close proximity to the Second Avenue garage. The site's bordered by street frontages on three sides and surrounded by high-density multifamily residential to the west and north, commercial uses of the downtown to the east, and the public library and Bank of America to the south. It should be noted that the same ownership group received approval in July of twenty-seventeen to develop the subject lot with a four-story, twenty-five thousand square foot office residential mixed-use building. That project included a subterranean garage that provided parking for twenty-eight vehicles via mechanical parking lift system. However, the building permit was never issued, as costs associated with soils cleanup and parking, and the parking lift system were said to be too cost prohibitive per the property In terms of the building design, the proposed building is a modern contemporary design featuring contrasting vertical and horizontal lines, recessed windows, setback from tall linear columns, and utilizes brick veneer and smooth plaster as the primary exterior materials. The applicant has prepared their own presentation, which will go over the specifics of their project design and site layout in detail. As noted previously, the project proposes to provide none of the required fifty-two off-street parking spaces. As a new office project within the CPID, the project is required to provide employee parking either as onsite, if located outside of the limited parking zone, which it is, offsite through construction or lease of private spaces, or by CPID lease in lieu fees or parking agreement subject to availability. It's important to note that the payment of fees in lieu of parking is not a by right provision, rather, the acceptance of fees in lieu of parking is at the discretion of the city and is both project and site-specific, based on existing conditions, including capacity and demand, and is subject to availability. Staff has communicated with the applicant throughout the pre-application process that the proposal to not provide any off-street parking is not feasible for the site. The applicant has noted future tenants of the, of the office would likely utilize the Second Avenue garage located across the street, approximately three hundred feet from the project site, as the primary location for parking. Parking at the garage is comprised of short-term spaces, up to three hours, and all-day ten-hour spaces. Monthly permits are available for the ten-hour parking spaces. Staff has informed the applicant that the utilization of the garage as an alternative to onsite parking is not feasible, as this particular garage is already severely impacted by parking demand. Parking demand at the garage is at or above target occupancy thresholds on weekdays during standard business hours, and this garage has the longest waitlist, well over four hundred requests for monthly permits of any of the public garages or lots in the city comparatively. The following visual indicates the available on-street parking areas within the immediate vicinity of the project site. These on-street parking spaces are limited to short-term two-hour parking. The parking garage is located, located on Second Avenue in El Camino is located in yellow along the bottom right corner of the graphic. Fortunately, I don't think you can see it on your screen. The project is, the project site is also located in the West Downtown Residential Parking Permit Program Zone. Residents in the neighborhood participating in the program utilize the two-hour parking areas to park on-street closer to their homes for extended periods up to seventy-two hours, I believe. While the applicant has not suggested parking on-street in the nearby areas as an alternative, staff is concerned that the additional demand for these short-term spaces will be impacted by the proposed office development, particularly due to the, the lack of available parking at the Second Avenue garage during business hours, and the convenience of parking closer to the office without having to cross the street to access the garage. The applicant held the required neighborhood meeting on October sixteenth at the San Mateo Library. Approximately thirty-five people were in attendance. The primary comments and concerns raised at the meeting related to required parking, where would the parkers, work, employees park, parking being a problem in the area, and the lack of parking compounding the parking issues in the area. Also, inquiries regarding how parking in lieu fees are utilized by the city, questions regarding whether the ball-bouts were necessary, and questions regarding whether the oak trees would be preserved. Also, compliments were provided regarding the building design, and the fact that the lot could potentially be developed. Meeting summary, the meeting summary is included in attachment nine. Since the submittal of the pre-application, staff has received nine public comment letters from individuals. The majority of the submitted comments can be characterized as highly critical of the proposal to provide no onsite parking. Some of the commenters are pleased with the potential of the lot being developed and complementary, complementary of the design, but still had concern regarding the lack of parking. Others commented the need for more housing rather than office. As proposed, the project is anticipated to require a site, site plan and architectural review for the construction of more than ten thousand square feet of non-residential development, a site development and planning application for the removal of major vegetation in conjunction with its redevelopment, and a tentative parcel map to merge the three existing lots into one parcel. Sample findings for the approval for the planning application types are included in attachment With regard to the information presented, staff is requesting the Planning Commission provide an evaluation of the project's proposal to pay in lieu fees, or fees in lieu of providing required parking off-street, or off-street parking, excuse me, and feedback on the overall architectural style and design approach, including building materials, massing, building forms, as well as how the building relates to the adjacent buildings, and whether the design provides a strong architectural statement. In terms of next steps, the applicant may revise the project plans based on planning commission and public feedback, should they determine they want to move forward with a submittal of a formal application. Upon submittal of a formal application, the project will go through a formal design review by the city's consulting architect. The formal application will include, include any additional technical analysis as determined by staff. Finally, when the project is ready, the project will be brought back to the Planning Commission for a public hearing for a decision. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to answer any questions staff may, or commission, the commission may have. And again, the applicant has also prepared a presentation and is available to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Can we have the applicant's presentation?
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Douglas Oliver. Thank you for your time tonight and reviewing the project. We have some duplicate information, so I'll kind of go fast through our presentation. It's kind of off-center a little bit. All right. Great. Thank you. Okay, so in the project, the goals we're working on is to provide a building that's contextual and appropriately scaled for the neighborhood, to complete the four-sided corner, which is a gateway to downtown San Mateo, to provide a pedestrian-friendly environment on that corner, and also to develop a transitional architectural design that speaks to the past and the present. And I'll say transitional means we're picking up on part of the historic of, across the street, which is downtown Historic District, and the kind of contemporary character along El Camino Real, past and future. The site's right at the corner of El Camino Real and Third Avenue. It's about a half a mile from the Caltrans station. It's about a seven or ten-minute walk, a great walk right through downtown city, and you'll be able to take advantage of the amenities of downtown. Here's a blow-up of the site. Currently, the site's empty. There was recently two projects completed across the street of very similar scale and size. We are adjacent to our twelve-story residential tower and to the north, a seven-story apartment building. Here's a picture of the corner as it exists now. Again, it's empty. The lot's eleven thousand four hundred and sixty-some square feet. It's about a quarter of an acre. It was previously the location of a gas station, and this is the view kind of looking towards the north. It's a transit-oriented site. It's a half-mile to the Caltrans station. It's within three blocks of six bus lines. Third Avenue is a Class Three bike route. We're anticipating TDM measures of twenty percent, not noted on here. The lot is within three blocks of three CPID parking garages, current garages, which have about eight hundred parking spots in it. The office building's three stories. The ground floor is about seven thousand square feet of office, and it also has a lobby. We're not sure if it's going to lease as all one tenant or multiple tenants. Second floor is about six thousand square feet, and the third floor is forty-seven hundred, as we're required to provide a massing step-back along the west adjacent to the residential tower. So, it has the smallest floor plate of forty-seven hundred, but it also has a roof deck that would serve that upper level. Parking. We know this project is controversial in its parking, and we can appreciate the neighbors' concerns and staff's concerns. However, we're, because of the constraints of the site, it's a small site. It's eleven thousand square feet to start with. As you take away the required setbacks, we're left with the even smaller site. The site is not large enough to provide a ramp to dive down. There's not physically enough length to get down into the, into a garage if we were to go subterranean. So, there's no way to do a conventional subterranean parking system. The previously approved project did have a car elevator and two levels of underground parking, and that was for twenty-eight spaces. Ultimately, those twenty-eight spaces helped deem the project unbuildable and unfeasible, and with that would have been a stacker system that isn't really a common with a car elevator. Goes down, your car disappears. So, we've studied this in great depth. The site is just very small. It's not possible to get a meaningful amount of parking that would satisfy what this building wants to be and how much program there wants to be to contribute to the corner. It's just not feasible, and we understand everyone's concerns, but we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. Parking just doesn't fit to support the program we'd like to put there. So, we hope you can comment on the architectural design, and you know, that's, we'll have to work with the city on the parking. Here's a site plan of the project. El Camino's on the right, Third Avenue's at the bottom, page bottom. We have a very wide sidewalk on two sides. El Camino Real's got basically twenty feet in between the El Camino Real str, street frontage and the building. On Third Avenue, again, there's about twenty feet. There's very wide sidewalks on those two frontages, eight-feet-wide pass zones with trees adjacent to the curbs. We have a lobby oriented at the corner of Third and El Camino Real. You can see a ball-bout there on the corner of El Camino Real. It's being requested through planning. We've had mixed comments about that. Projects that were built across the street were, I believe, originally planned to have ball-bouts, but no longer have them. So, the remainder of the first floor has some bike rooms in it. The upper top left has some electrical rooms and trash. There's a amenity area on the left-hand side, adjacent to the residential tower, which would be gated and would be amenity space for the office users. And we have two stairs that dump out on either side of the project. Here's a blow-up of the first, first level. Again, it's just all office on the first floor. Here's a second floor, very similar footprint, but a little bit smaller. It's all office. On the third floor, in the blue, is the footprint of the building. Again, we're required to step back the massing to the west, so there's a roof deck that would serve that office and be accessed just through that office on that floor. The elevations, we're providing a transitional architecture, a little bit historic, a little bit contemporary, mixed together. On the top elevation, that's the Third Avenue facing side, you can see the two-story massing, which steps down to the residential tower. That massing is prescribed by code. The bottom elevation is the El Camino Real elevation, and we've got a large glassy corner to help emphasize that corner. Also, that corner is set back from the curbs, additional five feet, so it's about twenty-five feet away from the curbs, that corner. So, it's got a generous setback in front of the lobby. We've got the rural court on the top side, again, showing the massing on the right-hand side. The elevation's very similar on both sides, and then the bottom elevation is what it would look like from the west or from the adjacent residential tower. We're looking at the two-story massing, and then up beyond that is the three-story massing. Here's a contextual elevation to show what it would look like in scale with the adjacent buildings. The top one is to show the twelve-story, the Towers Building, which is approximately a hundred and thirty feet tall. We're proposing a building that's about forty-eight tall with parapets. There's generous setbacks between the two buildings at the ground floor level or seventy feet, and at the third floor of our building, there's, would be about ninety-five feet between the, between the building and the twelve-story tower. The bottom elevation is showing Casa Baywood, which is on El Camino Real. It's across the street. It's a six slash seven-story building with its tower, and it's all parking garage on the first floor. Here's a perspective, same view that we showed you earlier with the empty site of the proposed building, focusing on the glassy corner, step-down massing on the left-hand side. It's got a strong horizontal eve at the top of the building, which is picking up on the Bank of America, the fourth corner. So, it's picking up a little bit of the brick from the two recently-built projects across El Camino Real, and a little bit of the Bank of America, and trying to stitch both the Historic District and the more contemporary things happening on El Camino Real. Here's an enlarged view of the lobby area. You can see it's recessed from the rest of the building vertically. It's got a large overhang to help call out the entry. The other windows on the first and second floors have horizontal awnings to help break up the verticality of the scale, and all the windows are pushed back and deep, providing depth to the building. That's all we have. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open this up then to public comment. Do we have speaker slips on this agenda item? Okay.
David Karp, followed by Stan Watkins. Stan Watkins, followed by Brenda Sell.
Good evening, Commissioners. My family and I have lived in the Baywood area for approximately twenty-seven years, and we have seen that intersection of El Camino and Third Avenue go from gas stations to vacant lots. And then, when it's a vacant lot, I send an email to our Chief of Planning, Ron, ask him to find some way to get the weeds taken care of, and he does it. Thanks, Ron. I'm very much in favor of this project, and I ask the city to consider the alternatives if it doesn't happen. How many other proposals are there? And if it's not accepted, then how many more years are we going to have to see vacant lots there? At one point, there were three vacant lots. Now, two on the east side are finally solved, but that vacant lot is an ugly eyesore. And so, in your dealings with the developer, with the proposal, my request is that everyone be reasonable, which I'm sure you will be, but just consider the alternative. If the city is too difficult, too intransigent, intransigent, too picky, too whatever, and the, and the, and the developer just says, "Do you know, we were here two years ago, we came up with a plan, didn't work, came back in 2019, we just can't work with the city," I think that would be very unfortunate. So I'm very much in favor of the proposal. I think it's a beautifully-designed building. It may not be to everyone's liking, but to me, I think it's very, very pretty. I'm not an architect by training like that other gentleman, but I think it's very attractive. Two quick points. The bulbous, the bulb out or the bulbous curbing was mentioned at the pre-application meeting. When I looked at the plans, the, of the four, of the four curbs at that intersection, this is the only one where there's a bulbous curb. So it seems to me either all four need to be bulbous or none need to be bulbous, but to have one out of four seems odd. Number two, in the presentation, the developer indicated that there would be box trees. And I just hope that whatever trees are planted are, are mature trees so that we don't have to wait years or decades for them to develop. So much like the last presentation and the slides that I saw there, the trees rose up two stories, they looked very mature. So I would just hope that the trees that are planted are not young, young saplings that are going to take many, many years to develop. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Watkins.
Brenda Sell.
Good evening and thank you for offering me this opportunity to submit my input to you. My name is Brenda Sell. I live at 33 Arroyo Court and I would submit that probably 50% of the people in this room do not know where that street is. It borders San Mateo Creek, sweet little place, and is behind Foster Towers. So across the street from my home is Deanza Park. And there's only parking on my side, on the residential side. On the other side, it is no parking. So our challenge is obviously, and I'm here to impress upon you, the parking challenge we face on Arroyo Court and on other residential streets in the area, and I have a number of emails of people who attended the pre-application meeting as well. But understand that our buildings were built in the '30s when people only had one car. So we only have a one-car garage. The other, the rest of our automobiles have to park on the street, the rest of them, the second one, let's face it. But in any case, when you approve the spaces building, I don't understand why this parking dilemma was not more seriously addressed at that time. With that over 400 waiting list for the Second Avenue garage, where are the 50, how many, going, where are those people going to park? If I worked in that building, guess what? I'd park on Arroyo Court. Yes, it's a two-hour parking limit, but how often does it get patrolled? And guess what? I'd pay the tickets. It's cheaper than the parking permit. At, that's what, how much is that, $300 a month? No, $65 a month, I believe, to park in the Second Avenue garage. In any case, this is what I recommend because we truly, I agree with the previous speaker, this is going to be a great addition to the entrance to our city, to have this lot finally developed. But perhaps one of the solutions to this parking dilemma is I realize we have some satellite parking garages planned, Fifth Avenue along Railroad Avenue, et cetera. How about do in lieu fees and apply them to an employee shuttle to go from those satellite garages to this work site and make a stop at the railroad station so that this employer of this development has an opportunity to hire somebody that doesn't have to walk five blocks to get to their place of work? So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sell. Any other public speakers? You can come on up and then just do a slip afterwards.
So I'll try to keep it short. Juan, I live in the building, right beside it. And so one of the big things, I know clearly we're concerned about parking, but the thing is, people just park in residential to avoid fees, whether it's the people working in the offices or going to downtown. There's no reason to pay downtown parking fees if you could go across the street and park for free, right? So that thing, that's every single day. I mean, 8:00 in the morning, you'll see cars parked there and they just get rotated. I know in San Francisco, they'll tell you, you can't move your car in the same block. It's got to go to a whole new block. I don't think that restriction exists. So if you move your car two parking spaces forward, you just buy yourself two more hours, right? So, I mean, people are going to take advantage of this all day. There's no doubt about that. The other thing is, if you've ever taken, if you just drive from Bank of America and go to Delaware and Third, that sometimes takes 15 minutes. And that's without the building that's previously been presented, this building and whatever else is going forward. So it's already impossible to move through that area, just another thing. Nobody bikes there. I cycle around the area, it's awful. The streets, I mean, everyone knows El Camino has roots. It's awful. There's no, I don't know what the Class III certification means, but I'd assume it's not good. Hardly anyone bikes there and we keep pointing at, oh, well, you know, people can bike to work, but no one does that. That's not a common thing in San Mateo. It just isn't. And then really, it seems like it just benefits the offices that site. There's no, there's not going to be retail, right? So it's just for offices and, I mean, it's already expensive enough in San Mateo. People go in and out of business within months. You know, it's nonstop, it's ever, it just rotates frequently. Yeah, and I guess I kind of wanted to hear how many employees are projected to be in there. I know the other place said 120 plus. So just kind of curious what that would look like in that building. Yeah, and I guess we already have office buildings going everywhere. If you look at Halesdale, if you look at, you know, towards Burlingame, I mean, that's the new trend. That's all we're getting is office buildings. And I think there's plenty of that. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Don't forget to fill out a speaker sheet. Any other, any other members of the audience who would like to speak on this agenda item? I knew it.
My name is Chris Call, I live at Foster Towers. Parking is terrible. We all know that. I had a question that came up in the pre-meeting, was kind of glossed over. I'm not sure what the actual status is. An environmental impact report was a hazardous waste site. As I understand it, they're just going to pour a slab over all that hazardous waste and then build a building on it and leave that intact. In my understanding, that in having dealt with hazardous waste in the past, that was not allowable. I guess that that's the plan now, going forward. And then parking, that's another thing. It's going to totally restrict my view because I'm on the third floor of Foster Towers and I'm going to be looking right at the back of that building. I'm not even sure what the back of that building really looks like, or is going to look like once it starts going up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Oh, shoot. Okay. And I think a couple of questions came up from the comments, public comments. I'll keep track and let's go to Commissioner, questions for either staff or the applicant. And I'll make sure that the questions that were brought up by the public are addressed, which I think they will be. And can we start with you, Commissioner Ebner, with questions for staff or applicant?
For the applicant, I think the, the letter or the memo from ArchTech dated September 9th, 2019, it says the contaminated soil, it hasn't been determined that there actually is hazardous materials there. Is that accurate?
That's true. It's not confirmed that it's hazardous. It needs to be further studied. So if we start to dig into it, that soil will be taken to a laboratory and analyzed to see if it's actually still contaminated or not.
Okay.
So we don't exactly know until the studies are performed.
But on the original, or the proposal that came to us a year or two ago, which was a residential project?
It's highly suspected that it's going to come back contaminated.
Okay. Wouldn't it be better to know that rather than changing everything?
In addition, the other project was not feasible, so that's why we're switching.
Okay. It was a combination?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. What is the Public Works comment, or is there a comment from Public Works on the bulb-out
So the bulb-out is recommended by staff and the pedestrian master plan also recommended this location for a curb extension. The reason for the curb extension is to increase pedestrian safety as well as visibility for crossing.
Okay. I'm sorry. One other question for the applicant. So you have a proposal, your proposal is for a building to be 44 feet, six inches, when you could have gone to 55 feet. And you're not exactly sure if your soil is contaminated or not. And I do understand staff's concerns with parking. Everyone obviously gets that. So if you were able to use those additional 11 feet or 10-foot section, could it somehow work where you could get some parking on-site? Specifically, if you went down two or three feet instead of 10 or 12, where the contaminants may or may not be, and had stacked parking on the ground floor?
We've looked at this in many ways and it's just not feasible to put parking on-site.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
I'm sorry for the applicant again. Sorry to have you popping up and down. Can you explain to me how it was not feasible?
Sure. For the program we're proposing, there's be 52 spaces required. And that's not exactly building out to our maximum allowable. We're allowed to go to 3.0 FAR. We're not quite there. So in no case scenario would you be able to park what's required for that program of a 3.0 FAR. The site is, our buildable area is only about 8,000 square feet. We would need to have probably a four or five-story garage that would have an elevator that would take cars away, you'd park your car, which is just not something I've ever seen or been involved in. The site is so small and so constrained, you can't even get a ramp to go down. So we've looked at this in many ways and it's just not feasible to get the required, any amount of parking that will help satisfy the required need. And since the zoning allows to be, ask for the in lieu fees and we're very close to three of the parking garages, we're asking to be considered for the in lieu. This is very similar to the two buildings that were recently built across El Camino Real. Very similar scale of sites, very similar scale of buildings. Those were built and approved without any parking. And I'm sure it was because of much of the same constraints. It's just not feasible to get the amount of parking on the site without detrimentally affecting the site plan, turning the first floor into all parking. You know, the vision is to create a nice pedestrian-friendly street frontage there, wide sidewalks, an environment where you're looking into the building and being invited and not creating, even if we were to put parking on the first floor, or just be looking at parking. That's not a great urban design or desired.
Who did you speak with of the mechanized parking? Did you talk to any companies? I'd be curious who you spoke with.
I've had previous experiences with City Lifts and Klaus.
And they looked at the site and they decided that that wasn't feasible?
The previous studies had gone in-depth studies, but having worked on many thousands of residential units throughout the Bay Area and having installed hundreds of stackers, we're very familiar with how they're used. And ultimately, I can't think of one example of a car lift which takes your, where you park your car and it goes in an elevator and disappears multiple floors down and comes back up when you're ready for it. It's just not something.
I was just wondering if City Lift came and looked at that site?
Not during this, not during this current iteration.
Not in that current iteration? So then what you're saying when it wasn't feasible, it was from studies from some of your other projects?
I've studied them. We, our firm has studied the sites and from my experiences, having worked with City Lifts and had City Lifts custom design their parking lifts for our previous project, very familiar with them. So previous project had worked with them. This version is through our experience and knowledge.
Okay. And so you said what, you had mentioned that there was a lot of contemporary building along El Camino. And I just wondered where, where you were thinking that it was the contemporary buildings?
The 12-story building that's about two, two blocks down is being re-clad.
Okay, so 400 El Camino.
Is being re-clad, is all glass.
Okay. All right.
And I also think the library, which I'd agree is one of the better buildings in the city, is very contemporary.
Thanks so much.
If I may, I'd just like to point out that the two office buildings on the other side of El Camino Real, similar to 180 East Third, are in the limited parking zone. So again, they could only have a very small number of parking spaces and only with an approval of a special use permit.
And this building is not in the limited?
No.
I thought it was. Okay.
Commissioner Wood.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The first question is about the cleanup issue, contamination, soil contamination issue. I guess that's a little concerning because I'm wondering if the Matt Foundation is a agreed-upon solution to capping the soil. In other words, I guess, or additionally, I guess, is there any concern that with, you know, high groundwater, that the contaminants would travel if they're capped, whether or not they're capped?
So the strategy here is kind of similar to the thoughts with asbestos now. And if you have asbestos in your home, you can capsize it so you just don't mess with it, don't dig it up. Is it one of the safer strategies? Speaking to the water, I don't have information on that, but I know per the recent studies that when they recently pulled out the wells, the water was decreasing, but I'm not sure how the contaminant could spread. But most certainly by capping it, you're not going to make it worse. It's an existing condition. You're going to keep it from spreading airborne and through the streets.
And is that something that's been done on other sites like this, that adds a solution? I'm not.
Yes. Yes, absolutely. We've done that on multiple projects. Me personally, not in San Mateo, but in Santa Clara on Brownfield sites, yes.
Okay. The other question I had is, oh, the other question I had is about this favorite building of mine, the Casa Baywood right next door, across Arroyo Court. Right now, obviously, it's an ugly parking lot, abandoned parking lot or whatever, but you do get this view of the side of that building. And none of your exterior elevations show the building beyond. And I'm just curious if what, you know, if that, if in particular, there's one area that I'm wondering if it's blocked and it's a bay window, kind of, well, it's more than a bay window, it's a, it's a bump out on the side of the building that is really, you know, a feature of the building. And I'm wondering if that would be visible still from Third, like above or beside the building? Anyway, I'd be interested in seeing an elevation that shows that.
Sure. What I know of Casa Baywood is, you know, it's a six- and seven-story building. The first floor is parking garage on a Rural Court. I think it's the whole footprint of the building. There are also, I believe there's cypress trees that are There are also, I believe there's cypress trees that are about three stories tall. So, you can barely see that facade, so if you're speaking on Aurora Court.
The element I'm talking about is at the top, so, so potentially it's still visible?
Potentially, this, the rendering that's partially you're able to see is a fairly accurate depiction of what you would see from a little bit south of the corner on El Camino Real.
Can you move it up? Okay. Oh yeah, there we go. Yeah, the element that I'm thinking of is probably above the building, but it's not really showing here.
But you might not, you might not be able to see it from the perspective unless you got far enough away.
Yeah, you probably won't see it unless maybe between the twelve-story building. So, anyway, I, I think it would be nice in the exterior elevations to show that beyond, if that's possible.
It's on the elevation that's, oh, sure, okay, I know what you mean.
I don't know, and I guess none of your other, I guess the other elevations don't show the adjacent buildings.
Are you talking about the, it's on screen now, the top, the balcony?
Yeah, the balcony.
Sure. You would be able to see that from this perspective right here because you're looking kind of through the rear yard. So, you would be able to see that from this point of view.
Yeah, yeah, that's the element, I don't know why I didn't think of balcony, but that's it. So, yeah, it, it's a nice element, so it'd be nice if they still had, I guess from their point of view, if they could still see over the building, the new building, and also if that was still visible, I guess, from this, you know, perhaps that's, that second floor area.
Yeah, that appears to be taller than the building we're proposing.
Okay, great, the other, the other question is for staff. I just wanted a clarification, there was something referenced about the parcel map and that, like a tentative parcel map that would combine properties. Is that part of this package or did I misinterpret that?
Yeah, we're still determining whether indeed three parcels exist. With the previous application, there was some indication with the survey that the lot was actually divided. I'm going to defer to our Public Works Department to provide more detail.
So, there are discrepancies between the maps provided by the county. I don't believe there are any records of parcel maps combining the lots currently. We'd be interested in investigating further, but I think it's cleaner to do a parcel map during this stage so there's no confusion.
I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Couple of questions for the applicant, I'm sorry for having you get up and back and forth. With regard to the approved project from a couple of years ago, that was a residential building, is the design of this proposal cued off of that or is this like a completely fresh take on the?
It's a fresh take.
It's a fresh take, okay. For the twenty thousand square feet of office space or a little under that, how many employees would that contemplate?
Between eighty and a hundred.
Eighty and a hundred? And so, and you're proposing three bike spots?
We actually have more shown, we should have updated the cover sheet, but we have spaces inside the building for eight. And there's four, there's two bike racks outside the building, so four.
Okay. In your presentation, you mentioned three CPID parking lots that were in, which, which lots are you talking about?
There's one across the street on El Camino and Second.
Second and El Camino, right.
There's the lot that runs in between the two blocks, it's a half a block away. If you go straight down Third Avenue, it's to the right, it's behind this one eighty Third Avenue parcel. And then there's the tennis courts parking lot.
Okay.
If you, if you bring it up, I can point it out.
Okay, thank you, question for staff. Do we address, because this came up with the public comments too, but why, why is there a bulb out proposed for this corner and not on the other three?
Again, I'll defer to our. I'll defer to our Public Works Department, that's a requirement of Public Works.
Aye.
There may have been street limitations, for example, existing through lanes on El Camino and then also on Third. I think those are the majority and maybe it wasn't looked at prior.
Okay. With the, going back again to the two thousand seventeen project, in Attachment Seven, there was a letter in the materials we were given, it made mention that the unit density for that residential development, that they would need a minimum for residential development of thirty to forty units, I think is what the letter said. What was the, what was the density of that approved project from two years ago?
I don't, I don't have that in front of me. I can provide that answer, but I don't have that info in front of me.
So, your assessment was for residential unit to be viable on that site, it needed thirty to forty units. And what was proposed and approved was eleven, okay. Thank you. The two buildings, the two relatively recent buildings on the east side of El Camino on that corner, when did those, when, when were those finished, a year ago? Twenty eighteen, right, I think?
The built year, speaking of the buildings at one.
The two, right, the clock, right, clock tower and the other one, I want to say about twenty.
It was a little bit before then, I can't remember the exact year, but I, it was.
My question is, so, so with regard to, you know, in the written communications and you've communicated to the applicant that the lack of parking is a fundamental issue for that site on Second and El Camino because it has that waitlist of four hundred and forty-three units, or four hundred and forty-three people waiting. Did that spike after those two buildings opened? Like before twenty, before those buildings opened, was it a more normal usage? More like the central parking garage, which was eighty percent?
I would have to look back in our data in terms of specific numbers. In the past, has not been above four hundred. I will say that's something that we've been seeing in probably at least the last six months to a year, but I'd have to look back at the data and provide that answer at a later time.
Okay.
You know, I would say that we did analyze parking for the CPID as a whole, particularly as you indicated, the central parking, you know, the parking that is in the vicinity of those two, of the Third and El Camino Real office buildings, and there was capacity at that time. When the residential project was proposed at this location, we didn't do an analysis of the CPID because they weren't requesting a lease. They were providing, albeit in a automatic parking scenario, they were not going to be utilizing CPID parking for that residential project, so we didn't even analyze it.
Right, because it was, it was proposed, it was parked as proposed.
Right, right.
Okay. Question for staff. So, the applicant mentioned Second and El Camino and that's been communicated that that is not a feasible parking option for this development. You mentioned the Third Avenue parcel, which I'm not sure how many spots that is. And then also the parking lot under the tennis courts, which I believe are targeted to be removed as part of the Central Park master plan. Is the, is, so this is a question for staff. Is the underground parking lot at the library, which is right across the street, a feasible option for this project? Or would it, is there any way that it would be?
All of the parking in the underground lot at the library is two hours and it's intended for the use of library patrons, it's not intended for use by, for other users. So, in the context of an office worker, someone that would be utilizing this building for a full day, a two-hour parking limit and the demand for the parking at the library for events that they host and for daily users, story hours, that sort of thing. I don't believe that that would be a viable option for this project.
Okay, okay. Okay, those are my questions. Any other questions?
I do have one other question as I've been thinking about all this parking. So, I'm not suggesting this is a good idea, but I'm curious with, you know, noting that it's not really logistically feasible to get curb cuts, ramps, all of that and, and to go, you know, down. So, that being said is that that would obviously be the same scenario if you were to go up. Like if you were to just build a parking garage there, maybe with retail on the first floor, is that also not feasible, there's just not the room for the ramps and all of that? Yeah. It's just too small. Okay, thank you.
Okay, can we put the two topic items up on the, on the screen?
While you're doing that, there was one more question from the public regarding the use of in-lu parking fees and whether it could be used for a shuttle service. And so, when the city adopted the in-lu parking fee, its use is limited to parking facilities. And so, that's physical structures, not services, so the in-lu fee could not be used for the shuttle service.
Okay, thank you. Okay, comments, so this will be final comments on the study session and we'll start with Commissioner Ebner.
I am sad, I was excited when this project had come to us and it was a residential unit, residential project. Thought it was kind of exciting, I remember it didn't use the full FAR, but it looked like a nice design and I was in support of that project at that time. Like the applicant probably is, I'm disappointed that that didn't work out for you financially. I am really going to have to rely heavily on staff in regards to the parking in-lu fee. I, I am just struggling with the location for this building and the parking in-lu fees. Normally, I do support parking in-lu fees because it makes people get out of their cars more often than not. This may be more of a burden on this very small area of town where the street parking is going to be the only option. I like, would hope that there was some possibility of using excess library parking, but that doesn't sound like it's feasible and it would probably be very logistically challenging. I'm leaning now not in favor of the parking in-lu fees. I'm hoping that at some point, the city and the applicant can maybe come up with a solution. I don't think we really need another office building in this part of town. I really wish it could be residential, but I understand the financial constraints of the project. Overall style, I see that it's both, architect, is the architect on both of them. I prefer the lane property, lane partners' design a little bit more than this one, they're similar. But with that additional floor, I think it gives you a lot more ability to use different architectural features. This one seems to be lacking in a lot of, or not a lot of, it's just lacking in, in the features that I would, I would want on that building. The two other projects that recently have been built on those corners have some nice round edges, some arches, I think a little bit more stone. I think they're more appropriate for that area, they've got the clock tower. This is a little different, it's not really as prominent of location going downtown, but I don't think it, it fits well on that corner. I don't think it, it, to me, it doesn't look like it's, it's mirroring the other projects in sight. I also am not a fan of such a short building in this location, I would think you would want a third floor. The, the, or fourth floor, the, thank you. I'm usually a big fan of the large glass lobby entrances, but in this case, it looks somewhat out of, out of size, it looks too big for this short building. You know, I, I kind of like the idea of the bulb out, if it's going to help pedestrians in traffic safety, seems to make sense to me. But I, I think the challenge for me would be, when this comes back, is, has the city and the applicant come up with feasible parking solutions? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mallory.
I, I'm very much in agreement with John's comments. I also was wishing it would be residential because we are in need of that and there are many office buildings undergoing renovations along El Camino that will then increase the, the availability to businesses. I would like to know if the soil is contaminated. I would like to, if it's not, if it is, it would be really nice to have a definitive answer on that before we go any further on, on a building for that site. The parking for me is a real problem and I was thinking of the Essex project over at Fifth and El Camino where they were challenged with ways to access the parking garage and they ended up coming through an alley, which I thought was very creative. And you're in between, the area in between the Baywood building and this site could possibly be an entrance into some kind of, of parking. As far as the architecture, I particularly like the architecture on the two new buildings on the east side of El Camino. And then I love the Baywood building, the apartment building, and I think that the Bank of America building is very interesting as well. And I'm not feeling that this new building is fitting in with the buildings that are surrounding it. I know the library is nearby and I know Foster Towers is behind it, but it would be nice along El Camino to have a little more architecturally interesting building. And those are all my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, so, regarding the parking, I think that it's difficult to support the pay in-lu, paying in-lu fees because the difference is that I think it's really this side of El Camino is different than the other side of El Camino. This side of El Camino, and, and, you know, obviously it's not just these people, it's anybody in the area, but I mean, we're, we're exacerbating the parking in the neighborhoods, in the residential neighborhoods, such as the adjacent, you know, Aurora Court or others. So, I struggle with that, I, however, I see that it's this little, you know, little design problem with this tiny little site. So, I, I'm not quite sure, you know, what other solutions there are, but it does seem like there's, you know, perhaps if the soil wasn't contaminated, maybe it would be easier to, you know, get something underground, but from what I'm hearing, that's, that's not even the case. I mean, you've got a certain width, I know for drive aisles, you've got a certain width for each parking space on each side, so I guess, I guess the width just isn't there. for each parking space on each side, so I guess, I guess the width just isn't there. So I'm, I'm not quite sure where to go with that, but that's, that's an issue. Regarding the design, I think it's interesting, the comments, and I think the, one of the reasons it looks sort of short is because it's a smaller building, but not because it's that much shorter. I mean, the other buildings are also three stories, but this one happens to be right next door to, is the, is the residential tower 12 stories, I think? So it happens to be next to two tall residential buildings, so it's a little deceiving. I, I actually kind of think the design has this kind of tailored look about it in terms of the main part of the building, with the kind of dark mullions and the vertical ribs, and the, and the base of the building being kind of a, something lighter and different. So I like the, I like that aspect of it, I like the gridded windows in that, in this building, I like the gridded windows. The thing I have trouble with, I think, in the design is the, what you were calling transitional design, which is the kind of much more modern chunky piece on the west side of the building. And yeah, it is transitional to the adjacent building. And I know there's been sort of care to kind of address the detailed building on one side and the more modern building on the, on the west side. But I think that that's too much of a, like, it's too, it's too blatant of a difference between, within the same building. So I guess I would like to see that modern chunky element on the west side maybe refined a little bit more. Maybe it doesn't need to be such large white bands, could be a little bit more refined, I think. Or, you know, yeah, or just something, I guess, less, less, starkly different than the rest of the building. Okay, so that, and then as far as the bulb out, I agree, I think that it kind of makes sense if you're making a turn off of El Camino, it does seem better for, for traffic safety. I think the other side of El Camino is different because when you come around the corner on El Camino, or from Third onto El Camino, you don't have parking there, you don't have the bump out, but you, you have no parking spaces there. I was looking, I was noticing from the photos and the site plans. So this is a different way of addressing it for the other side of El Camino. Let me see, I think that was all my comments. Yeah, so I'm not quite sure how to resolve the parking issue, I don't know what we do about that. But yeah, I, I, I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you. So my comments, so on the onsite parking, I would echo what the other commissioners have mentioned. You know, so staff has given feedback that the Second and El Camino is not a viable solution. It sounds like the library is fully utilized, it seems like the other CPID choices that the applicant mentioned don't seem like those are solutions either. I feel like, you know, traffic and parking impact in that area has probably gotten worse with the two buildings on the east side that have opened up. Adding 100, you know, employees with no parking on that, to me, would be, you know, just create even more catastrophic parking problems in that neighborhood. And it is a residential neighborhood, right? It's, we were talking about the transition on the two sides. So I am, you know, on this topic, I am probably not in favor of the paying fees in lieu of the parking. With regard to the building design, you know, on the bulb out, again, if we consider that part of the design, I would defer to what the, you know, what the traffic safety is or what the, you know, what the requirements would be for safety. It just seemed, I was just pointing out, it seemed odd that there's one of, you know, four corners that has a bulb out and the other three don't. But that, to me, is more of a, you know, infrastructure issue. With regard to the building design, so I don't have the educated background maybe that some of the other commissioners have on the design, but I find it attractive style. I like the transition from the larger building and the different elements of this and the vertical sweeping up lines of the windows. So actually, I like the building design. So no comments on that. But again, you know, going through, you know, Attachment 8, the sample findings that were provided, I just don't see how this project would meet it as presented primarily because of the parking challenges. So those will be my feedback on this project. So we'll close this item. Thank you. Last item on the agenda, any reports and announcements?
Yes. First of all, this Saturday, November 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:45 a.m. at King Center will be the next general plan workshop. We'll start to talk about alternatives that might be looked at for scenarios, not only for the entire city, but for the identified study areas. There will be no meeting of the planning commission on November 26th. We don't have any items ready, so you'll have an extra couple of nights if you need to prepare for the Thanksgiving holidays. Our last meeting of 2019, because we never have the second meeting in December, will be on December the 10th, and we will have a study session. There's a mixed-use project between El Camino Real and Jasmine. I could go ahead and send you the link, but it's, it's on the What's Happening page if you want to take a look at the details. Somewhere along the lines, we'll need to give the commission an update on state planning laws, specifically ADUs. It's not on the agenda tonight, so I won't go into detail, but I would just say that with respect to accessory dwelling units, the state has passed a number of bills, which some need to be reconciled, but basically is preempting local authority over specific aspects of accessory dwelling units.
Ron, on that item, I know we corresponded on it, but this is, because I know there's been a whole raft of additional housing-related-
Correct.
Cause this is not, this is just focused on ADU?
Well, yeah, there are a number, I mean, there are a whole host of housing bills that-
Right.
-were adopted. So there are three in particular that are ADUs, but there are others that affect processing, density bonuses for-
Yep.
-affordable housing projects, all sorts of different-
Okay. Those would be like a future, maybe cover that in the future meeting.
That's correct. That's correct. And if you want, there's an interesting podcast on the Commonwealth Club of a discussion of the general topic of these housing bills. They don't get into specifics because it's the Commonwealth Club and it's for a broader, there's not planners in the audience.
Okay.
But I thought it was kind of interesting.
Look for that.
So that concludes the meetings. Looking at next year, we'll have a revision to the city's climate action plan that will be coming before you for study. We've got a couple of smaller projects that are in the offing. One is 2850 El Camino Real, and these are all on the What's Happening page. 2850 El Camino Real, which is, I think it's the recruiter station right next to the Bank of America. We have a housing proposal there. We have a housing proposal right here at 1919 O'Farrell. There's a low-scale dental offices at the end of the cul-de-sac for redevelopment as residential. We also have a pre-applica, that's, those are both pre-applications, we have another pre-application in-
Can we close the door? I'm having a hard time listening to you with the loud conversation going on out there. I'm sorry.
A proposal for the lot, I think if you drive down El Camino Real, you'll see the fortune tellers little, so that lot is also being developed. So what we're seeing in terms of trends would be twofold, one, smaller lots are now coming forward in pre-applications. Secondarily, we're seeing with the Harvest Properties that you, that you saw at the last meeting, as well as Waters Office that you approved earlier in the year, redevelopment of commercial sites with housing. So whether that trend keeps up in 2020, I don't know, but those will be a number of projects that will be coming forward. There'll be a neighborhood meeting, and then they'll be coming forward to you in study session.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Any commissioners have any reports or announcements?
I have a question about this in-lu parking fee. So does the city have specific needs for, or uses for those fees? And specifically, can they use them for parking structures?
Yeah. Ron and Ron may have even more information, but I think the bulk of, we collected into one fund, and the bulk of that fund is going to be used to pay for the parking garage downtown at Fifth and Railroad-
Oh, okay.
-that will be connected to the affordable housing project.
Right. We've collected in-lu fees, I think, since the 1970s, and so they've been used for different parking facilities, including, it was helped to offset the cost for the new parking garage next to the downtown cinema, because obviously the cinema developer was on the hook for a certain amount of parking spaces that were demanded by the cinema. Well, we wanted extra parking spaces, so some parking funds were used to assist with the construction of that parking garage. So it's those type of capital improvements. You pay, most people pay into the meters downtown, and that meter revenue is used for the maintenance, cleaning, security, and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
Any other reports, announcements?
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, during the meeting, thank you, guys. See you in a moment.